We'll get started. Southway Hall Township. Thank you for the meeting. Beginning the E movie recorded. Start with the Volvo.
If you don't want to hear it up here, it's okay. I'll listen to it up here.
Diane.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Bill McNeam.
Here.
Alan Tope.
Abstention service.
Here.
Six members of the president. For one.
Okay, we do a pledge allegiance.
The United States of America. And to the Constitution. One condition. In this world. The breathing of justice is for all.
All right. We'll start with the agenda. And the two is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One from April 15. Page one, so we'll start with the April 15. These minutes, are there any comments or corrections? Hearing motion to approve. So. It's Brian, Diane. We'll call those.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill McNeam.
Alan Tope.
Abstention service.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Moplin. Five to zero on us abstention.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the page twenty. Page twenty three.
I have one suggestion, Greg. On this. On the top of page nine. In the first paragraph, I stated that I won't speak to the Public Safety Commission. I think that should be, I won't speak towards the Public Safety Commission. Okay. Thank you.
I also have one directly. I have agenda number six, transportation. It says, Mr. High School, the contact commission will be sitting in Bridge over to us. About twenty three. Should also be amended to add for now. They will eventually. That is very common.
Any other comments? Question, suggestions? Okay. Motion to approve. So.
We'll call vote. Diane Kelly.
Abstaining.
Brian.
Brian.
Bill McNeam.
Brian.
Alan Tope.
Brian.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Moplin.
Abstaining.
We have a motion passed at four to zero to the same.
Okay. Thank you, that completes. Agenda two, we go to the agenda three, the comprehensive plan update summary.
I'm going to speak over here because we are. Streaming the meeting through GoToMeeting and the microphone's right here. The mics, the tabletop mics don't work very well. So I figured I'd come over here and speak. So comprehensive plan meeting is scheduled for June 29. It is the working group kickoff or introductory meeting. So we will present kind of how we got to this point. And then describe our modelers or our traffic modelers. And our economic model will give a presentation on. Where the public outreach for where should we grow and how should we grow? What kind of impacts that will have both from an economic standpoint and a traffic standpoint? And then we will get into. The working group, how we're going to roll out the working groups. We'll present, we'll have, we have workbooks together for these working groups. And kind of lay out a rough schedule. Once we get into the working groups, that's when we'll kind of nail down hard dates for each of the meetings. There will be three individual working group meetings per section. And then we'll wrap up with a. Culmination meeting where working groups will present their recommendations to the planning commission. And then from that point forward, it becomes the planning commission's job to kind of sort through those recommendations and formulate, put everything together into a comprehensive plan. Later in the meeting, if there's time, we can go over in a little more detail. But that's a summary for now.
And then we go to meeting.
Yes. Yeah, so the comprehensive plan meetings will primarily be go, go to meetings. We may, some of the working group meetings, we may shift to some in-person meetings depending on. If that working group wants to do in person. We do have the second meeting scheduled is where we bring in Lehigh Valley Planning Commission to. Kind of discuss the best practices and things to consider for each of the topic areas. That meeting is probably going to be virtual. The other two meetings are probably, we can kind of play it by ear with those.
The second meeting.
So the meeting, the 29th is definitely virtual. And then the first set of working group meetings, it's kind of up in the air. Second group of working, second grouping of working group meetings is virtual. That's with the LVPC. Then there's a third set of working group meetings, which again will be up in the air. And then we all get back together for that final meeting. And that, depending on where we are with the calendar, could be either way.
Okay, and we've not scheduled any of the.
Correct, we have like a rough timeline for weeks that we're shooting for in July for those working group meetings. All right.
Do you have a date set for the LVPC meeting?
It's the week of. Twenty, Greg, what was it, the twenty? The twenty something of July, Jan, July, yeah. We're looking, we're trying to juggle schedules because they have their, I believe that's their commission meeting week. So we're trying to accommodate them and get them on board so we can. Use their. Tuesdays, Thursdays are bad, okay. So I think we're looking at like that Wednesday, but that's a commission meeting, so we're kind of doing some juggling.
Twenty one, twenty first or twenty eight.
Yes, so it would be the, I think it's the 21st that we, whatever's in that week. So we're looking at Mondays, possibly that Friday. So we're trying to nail that down, yeah.
So either the 21st or 20, 28, because 20 is the 21st. This D O C.
Yeah, so it would be that week. And if we have to have it earlier based on their availability, we might do that, but. Again, we're trying to nail that down.
You're welcome.
All right. Tonight, the word is subdivision review. We have two this evening. First is thirty nine, twenty six Lime Kiln Road Minor Plan 2020 dash two oh three. Mr. Request of preliminary final plan review. We'll start with the state of reason.
Thank you. This is an application to subdivide the property located at thirty nine, twenty six Lime Kiln Road. The plan poses to subdivide the sixty three point nine six two eight acre lot into. Lot one containing an existing single dwelling unit and four accessory buildings. On a one point two nine six seven acre lot on the Lime Kiln Road. Lot two containing an existing single dwelling unit on a one point eight four one five acre lot on the Warfield Road. The residual lot three containing sixty point eight two two six acres on the Warfield Road and Lap Road. The subject property is zone RR two rural residential two. Anthony and Janelle Hannah are the owners and applicants. Previous consideration at the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one hearing, the zoning hearing board granted three dimensional variances to the lots. At the December twentieth, twenty, I'm sorry, December seventeenth, twenty twenty meeting, the planning commission took under advisement minor plan twenty twenty dash two oh three. Thirty nine, twenty six Lime Kiln Road. Planning Commission also deferred. Requirements pertaining to the installation of curving long public streets. Pertaining to the requirement to install sidewalks along public roads. Pertaining to requirement to construct Warfield Road in accordance. With the arterial street cross section standards. And. Requirements to construct Lime Kiln Road and Lap Road in accordance with collector tree standards. All four of those were deferrals. Basically, we're going to just get the rest of it. And move directly to the recommendation. The recommends, the planning commission recommend preliminary final plan approvals of work commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with following conditions. A complete waiver from time limitation to review the plan will be required if the revised plans are not submitted by tonight, twenty seven, twenty twenty one. To be deemed and deemed sufficiently clean for presentation to work commissioners at or before their August eighteenth, twenty twenty one meeting. The conditions are. One, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security maintenance and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor. Be executed that sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted. Such security shall be available for draws, draws presentations no further than sixty miles from township's office. And evidence of necessary insurance coverage shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of township engineer comments of Mr. Anthony Calerita is contained in his view letter dated June eleventh, twenty twenty one. Three, the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of community development department, the comments of Mr. Greg Athens, as contained in his review dated June eighth, twenty twenty one. Four, that the applicant complies with the January twelfth, twenty twenty one recommendation of the parks and rec court. And contributes fees in lieu of parkland dedication to the amount of twenty five hundred dollars in order to meet the parkland and open space requirements of the subdivision land home ordinance. Five, that the applicant complies with forthcoming recommendation of the landscape and trajectory commission. Six, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. Seven, that the plans will be revised and indeed to be cleaned prior to them being presented to work commissioners. The planning commission's soft deadline act and the plan is for nineteen. The order of commissioners are deadline act and the plan is August eighteenth, twenty twenty one.
Turn over to the applicant.
Um, okay. It sounds like we are at the point that we're in agreement, uh, just about everything. I did make some copies up so that we have a clean waiver list of what families have, right? Or? Okay. I think it only makes six copies. It's basically my response letter that we will be submitting next week of the five set of plans. Assuming that the planning commission approves waivers and deferrals. I spoke with Greg and briefly concerning the landscape plan. That was one of the only ones that I really wanted to discuss tonight. I know the plan at Hunter's scale is very filled with information. There's a lot of detailed contours and all the environmental. Information had to be added to the plan. The property is bounded by. Almost probably eighty percent of it by woods or tree lines. With the exception of where the two existing homes are going to be. There are some very large trees that are long line of hill. And then the properties themselves have numerous ornamental trees throughout the property. I would like to see if the existing conditions plan would be acceptable as a landscaping plan or do we need a separate plan completely instead of landscape plan? That we just sort of try everything else off except the trees and wood. Because like I said, it is, it's pretty much surrounded by. Data's neighbors and neighbors' trees. I don't think that you need to add any additional trees. But the thing, do you have anybody here as a comment that'd like to?
I agree with my other property. I took a look on Google Earth Street View as well. It, the one section east of where Lime Kiln ends, it's, that's the, it's, that's the wooded, where that's the. The one house has about four, four to six very mature trees. I noticed the homeowner, looks like the homeowner takes a lot of pride in, in painting with those trees. There's compost around it and flowers in the compost. The only open area is where the existing houses and existing homeowner, based on, on what I drove by. I don't think it's fair to force the homeowner to plant trees. With this just being subdivision or, or lot, lot adjustment. For that reason, I think it's fair to defer. Prefer any landscaping until a land development. Street trees until a land development would be done. That there's, you know, homes and whatnot proposed at that time, in my opinion, it's more appropriate to provide a landscaping plan. Because also, um, you don't want to plant trees and then land development comes in and improvements come, the trees are in the way. So.
So that's fair enough. I will move that weight request then down into the deferrals of the year's spending. And the one last item, I noticed that they want us to add a note. And I think the note should be on the plan. That if any new driveways were proposed, that the highway I could go along, Warfield Road, this permit would be required. I believe the existing driveways right now. Actually come out and then the line fell right. So I think, I think it does, that is appropriate, but I don't think it deals with the, the current situation. Other than that, I have no questions or doubts, I think, or. I made almost ninety percent of all the adjustments. Be ready to submit maybe tomorrow or for Monday.
I'm going to suggest to the planning commission, one additional condition to add to the list that Greg had given, which for your consideration. And it would be a plan note being added to satisfaction potential engineer, potential solicitor. And similarly, which would be in the developers. That covers four things. One, that the township has not investigated the environmental status of the property. Two, that the owner is not aware of the environmental contamination on the two residential lots being created. Three, that the owner is served by, that the two residential lots lie entirely outside of the environmentally restricted area. And finally, that the township would be identified in a promise, which is ordinarily provisioned with all different anyways. But it would be explicitly favored.
Okay. In addition to that, the attorney or the maximist who would want people to take care of it. The new note about the environmental covenant is now about four times the size. So they went through an exercise similar to what you're discussing, a little more detail on their part to protect them also. If you would be kind enough just to send me a memo on that, Greg, I started writing down real quick during those four items and then I'll, I'll add it to the plan.
Well done. And mark the note that you're referring to. Is that going to appear on this plan or is that somewhere else?
No, it will be on this plan, but I want to say. Greg, that kills, since you're the one that thinks most in the center. I'm going to give you the email, they sent it with the, the updated.
Thank you.
The environmental covenant is recorded, the Atlantic County Courthouse, the record where it's recorded. All the plans showing the extent of the environmental restriction area are included in that covenant. This is fairly lengthy. But it is easy to access, so it's not something that's hidden or, or we'd be difficult to find. And I believe the township has the copy of that entire.
I have a question about the waiver for the requirements. Which you're averred to make, it seems like it would be an easy turnaround for me.
Well, first of all, we're not creating any new lots or subdivision that would require a bus stop in any kind. It's pretty much an existing condition. I, I just don't see the need for land to get involved. I couldn't look at it, the, the, you know, if we were developing, you know, twenty lots or some townhouses or. A community where people gather to get on a bus, I'd say absolutely, you know, there should be a bus stop here.
Ready for questions from the benefit?
Any questions from the space dedication?
That, I'm sorry, that was one other one I, I did want to discuss. Tom and I have been discussing that. And I, I think I know the answer to this already. We have a very, very large piece of ground that is. An environmental protection area. And then there's quite a bit of ground that is, is not committed where the cap is, et cetera, et cetera. That's going to be a very large piece of undeveloped ground coming up, remaining that, that's open space in township. Pretty much. For quite some time, they are, and I know one of the questions was, you know, is it ever going to be fully remediated? Is it ever going to have any type of development that's going to be allowed there? The, right now, I believe the leachage is. Is completely finished and controlled. The methane includes mostly all been removed, the methane has now subsided. But in the covenant, and again, it's lengthy document that I've read through. There's no permitting any types of foundations or roads or digging through the cap that is on top of that environmental protection area. So could somebody come in there and maybe put a driving range in as long as it was off the, with all grass? It is possible. There are a few things that may be able to be developed on that piece. But again, most of it will not be developed. At one time, I think Renee was involved in this conversation, and I'm feeling that she's not interested. There was some talk about. Giving that piece of crap to the township. And it didn't seem like they were having any interest at that time. I'm removing, I think that probably. But I mean, that's up to you. Again, it's going to be a large open space and.
I think in terms of this situation, Dean Lu may be more appropriate than dedicating open space. With environmental concerns. That's just my opinion.
Correct.
Yeah, quite frankly, lot three does include some area that isn't within the environmental zone. So that's what that is going to be covered on.
Oh, okay, that's where that is.
Yeah, because you couldn't put a, a single house on it.
Fair enough.
So that's all.
I just have one question on environmental area. How, how often is that monitored?
Uh, the people that run the maximist, I believe the gentleman in charge's name is Jeffrey Saddle. He could better answer that question. There's a monitor stationed there that I believe is hooked up to their internet that they, they keep a monitor on it and. You know, it's constantly maintained, it's part of the group, which is a group of probably seven, seven or eight large companies, GP, Air Products, different paint companies that are responsible. They'll have to keep monitoring that front of the patch committee in order to maintain that and make sure it stays, you know, still in good condition.
Is that available online, you?
The information about it, absolutely not. You can contact the maximist, but I believe Mr. Saddle would. Be reluctant to talk to you without a reference there. But it was typical, he didn't get this to move forward to where we are now. Without, you know, we had to wait for responses for very long, very long time. Or Jeff, do the answer, but just had to wait clear what he said.
Any other questions from the commission? The questions to the board? Okay. Move on to. Benefit mission decision, people go through the waivers and deferrals first. I don't know which. Do you want to use? I mean, or do you?
Do you want to use the one you just received?
Okay. It's just, it doesn't. It doesn't get enough information on, but, but they are.
I think it's such a, this, I don't think there's no comment. The counties is more helpful than the first.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
Page thirty four of the treaty. Aren't they?
The first one is. Now those waiver requirement to Smithman to length up. The reference solid three twelve, that's twenty three, eight thirteen. Whether waiver. Just this next to anything. Recommend. Wait a minute. We'll call vote.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Hi.
Bill McNeam.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Moplin.
Hi.
Motion passed at six to zero.
Second one is a waiver for the provision of. Of an arterial street cross section of Warfield Road. The planning commission recommended this request to be revised to a deferral. So it would be a deferral. Of the arterial street cross section Warfield Road.
Hi, bud. This was the one that you had recommended as a deferral? I believe the applicant wants that changed to a waiver. That's what is requested.
Actually, Greg.
Or?
For the cross section requirements for the Blackwood Street and arterial streets, the deferral file. Actually, Ray, for the cross section requirements for the vector street and arterial streets, the deferral file.
This is for the arterial.
Okay, this is the.
So is it a deferral okay?
We currently have a recommendation for a deferral. He's requesting that be changed to a waiver.
And why is that?
Let's take a quick picture, Ray. That is not out of the sand. Well, this is new. I'll learn the new one.
Say that this is a time point, it's a year and a half. Not true.
I think, I think this should be, that's why I'm sorry, I know this is.
I actually don't need that.
Good, no, we are already. The next one is a waiver of the hundred and ten foot separation driveway from arterial intersection. Existing lots and driveways eighty point nine feet from the intersection of work field and mine from the. This is a waiver from, to the existing driveways, it's just eighty nine feet, eighty, eighty one feet versus the hundred and ten. Do you have two addresses you're changing? Your motion to grant that, I'll make a motion.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Mowbray. Motion passes six to zero.
Next is the waiver of the maximum twenty foot driveway with a right way line. Recommend we grant a way. Sergeant. Matt Allen.
Thank you.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Mowbray. Motion passes six to zero.
I'm just skipping number D, that was the open space issue. So it would be a B in the.
No action.
And he is the waiver of the installation of shade trees versus the, or until development. From motion to the deferrals.
I'll say.
Brian David.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
So we're not waiving.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Mowbray.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next one is a waiver showing all sidewalk trails, driveway streets, east and right ways. Planted resisting the subdivision within four hundred feet of any part of the subdivision. These are all restrictions on property should be shown otherwise.
Question.
Second. Question by Diane, second by Brian.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Mowbray. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so next, she waiver for the showing location character and elevation of any building within one hundred feet of the track. Second. Motion by Diane, second by Brian.
And that was a waiver?
Yes.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair. Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matthew Mowbray.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
The next one is a landscape plan. I said, you're saying trying to be going under waiver or.
I'll make a motion for a deferral.
This would be for them to create the plan. So likely deferral wouldn't be much help to us.
Oh, yeah.
In this particular section, again, it's a little more lengthy than, I know the street trees are the main part of landscaping. I think cover that with a deferral. This has to do with the clear side triangles and details and many other aspects that they are on the plan. Difficult to see because of the density of what's on here. So I guess we're in agreement with the deferral from the street trees. And the landscape plan, I believe, we could probably cover that by putting, that is the landscape plan. It contains all the information that's in that section concerning the site triangles, the physical features, existing trees that are separated from woodlands. We have all that show. But I don't think I need a deferral, the things are show, it just doesn't say landscape plan on sheet two.
Basically, if you grant a waiver, he would not have to add additional plan sheet to show them what you're saying.
It's already there.
The information's already on the subject features plan.
Can it show the specific targets?
Yes.
Okay. There was a comment from the dummy officer about some of the something being difficult to see, I think.
Correct. I believe the first five triangles, and they were also asking, and this is one of the things that was going to add. They were also asking about the lot front to, especially lot one is the most difficult because it has a very jagged right way. So I was thinking about just putting a little chart of the plan. Lot one, two, five, this is lot one, three, fourteen, five, eighty. Lot two is five hundred and fifteen, four, six, ninety. Just so it's clear that those items aren't just intruded anyway, or, you know, there'll be a definite little chart added to it.
Is that the road front?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Those front side rear rear setbacks?
Those were all on, that one I'm a little confused on because all the front, rear, and side rear setbacks are all on sheet. So I didn't know what was missing. Mark about that condition, why they had to change.
I don't think it's a case of they were missing. I think it was a case of busy plan, hard to detect what exactly is pointing at what.
Actually, the blowout is very clear. And then the whole scale one shows the entire property. The environmental areas really. So I don't know who they had come on.
Well, what I would suggest, since this has nothing to do with your, with what you're asking for, a separate land is being planned. Perhaps what you might want to do is simply call up zoning officers or point out what's going on, and maybe you can make that comment whole way.
We'll just make sure that we can follow.
I guess if you want to. Yeah, a waiver, basically by granting a waiver, you say that the existing conditions plan is sufficient.
I make a caution.
Motion by Diane, second by David.
Roll call. Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson. Matthew Mowbray. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, next one is a waiver providing bicycle paths and trails.
You can discuss this.
Does it wave any? No, okay.
I don't think we have to.
I don't need that one, yeah. Okay, and Jay, you discussed, that's not waivers of B for the open space dedication. Deferrals we did do last time.
Yeah.
We did four of them, you said, but we got one over.
Yes, we did B.
And one B.
On page three, four, and then A and C on page seven, five. That counts for all of them.
We don't need anything with the intersection, work field road. Is that all of them?
That is all of his requests, yes. If you wish to discuss anything further, you can discuss that with the applicants in this here.
You have a discussion. Yeah, okay. Okay, that's all the waivers in the first, we'll go with the motion for the. Plan with the conditions, seven conditions, plus a eighth condition, four part condition that. Motion to. Motion by Brian, second by Diane.
Roll call vote. Diane Kelly. Brian Height. Sorry, Bill McNair. Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
And Matthew Mowbray. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, great, I have to wait down the.
Okay. Okay, I know my presentation, but thank you very much. When you were discussing the progress of the plan, is there a date yet when they feel that it'll be finalized and ready to go? For the commission? And it's only been three or four years since I've asked you.
It is getting, it is getting closer.
That's all I hear. This is going to be March, it's going to be June, March, April. I know it's going to really be stalled, so obviously, we thought about it this last year. We're hoping maybe twenty twenty five consensus. We're hoping. Okay. All right, that takes care of any other questions? All right. So the next item is Ridge Farm, major plan twenty seventeen, that's one of one. Request for planning to do and the state presentation.
This is an application to develop the properties located at Huckleberry Road in five four eight seven four six four two two one three nine. Huckleberry Road in five four eight seven six seven five four four seven three four. Twenty-five, twenty-three Huckleberry Road. Twenty-five, eighty-two Huckleberry Road. Eighteen oh two North Cedar Crest Boulevard. Huckleberry Road in five four eight seven two seven three four three one three four. Cedar Crest Boulevard in five four eight seven two six five seven one one four six. Huckleberry Road in five four eight seven two seven three zero three nine eight four. Cedar Crest Boulevard in five four eight seven two six three two three zero seven six. Nineteen twenty-six Cedar Crest Boulevard and nineteen twenty-eight Cedar Crest Boulevard. The plan proposes a TND residential close to development on approximately one hundred and thirty-eight point three four acres consisting of sixty-eight single dwelling units, eighty-eight age restricted single dwelling units, seventy-four two unit dwellings, eighty-two age restricted two unit dwelling units, a clubhouse. Three hundred and eight apartment units in eleven twenty-eight unit apartment buildings. Five condominium apartment buildings containing sixty apartment units total. Two three story and two four story mixed use buildings containing twenty-seven thousand two hundred square feet of commercial restaurants placed on the first floor and one hundred apartments total above. Two one story five thousand square foot commercial restaurant buildings. One thirty thousand square foot medical office and another community clubhouse. Stormwater management facilities and approximately twenty-four point nine four seven acres of open space and thirteen point two two nine acres of active open space. The plan also proposes sixty-four two unit dwelling units on the R four portion, nine single dwelling units on the R two portion, nine single dwelling units on the RR portion, and eight single dwelling units in the RR two portion. All lots are proposed to be served by public water and sewer. K Walbert LLC is the equitable owner and applicant. Consideration stretches back a number of years. Specifically, this has been reviewed at February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, the October seventh and twenty-first, twenty twenty, and the September thirtieth, August twenty-fourth, July sixteenth, and May twenty-first, twenty twenty meetings. The additional use approval for condition used twenty seventeen six oh one Ridge Farm was granted by the Board of Commissioners on November twentieth, twenty nineteen with five conditions. Skip to the recommendation, the department recommends that the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Intention upon the applicant submitting a completed waiver for the time location to review the plan. The planning commission's soft deadline to review, to act on the plan is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Where commissioners' hard deadline to act on the plan is also June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
That's good.
Good evening. Jim Preston, attorney general of the county, you all know Jason Alar. Our unit, first of all, six, good, back to you first, four. I for one prefer that. The other guy I tell you is in this room and. Fussit is very, very. He's there, he's in here already, yeah. It is, it's the fussit. Rather than jump in and, it's a cold start here. We thought of the investigation, just gave a quick overview synopsis of chief today. Discussing for, you know, the outside, who has what you are pet. From our perspective, we had probably two action items that we asked the commission to consider. One is a waiver request, Jason gave to that. The other one is, just some questions concerning the mobility movement. We'd like to talk about that as well. Obviously, any questions that the commission has, we try to answer. So in the meantime, I'm going to turn to the investigations and then you can bring us up to the next.
Good evening. I agree with Jim's.
Excuse me, could you hold the mic up to your mouth so people can hear? I've gotten some text messages that people cannot hear, those that listening in. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Jason Alar. Against the U personally. So Jim touched on why we're here tonight.
Discuss, I thought it would be worthwhile to just give a planning commission update. For where we stand, so this is the third plan submission we've made of the whole land development. I mean, between then, we did numerous revisions in our basis to deal with all the waiver. And Greg went through the law process and scouts at this point, so. But that's where we are with the overall plans, the last number before you, the planning commission was in February. Since then, we provide the plans based on all the comment letters received. Most of the changes that were made as a result of the letters. Didn't include real technical details, things you're going to see from 10,000. Were really planning, the more engineering. But, but there's a lot of those details that have been worked on and worked out, so. The meetings that have happened since the last planning commission meeting on the project. We did attend a public safety meeting in April and then earlier this week, attended a park. We didn't get into, as we talked about, things like the mobility easement, the recommendations of public safety. I had a good meeting earlier this week here in this room, with the park. So just to touch briefly on, on what was. Talked about with the park, right, on this one, one of the plans we had. It's a little difficult to see just basically the scale of the plan. Up in the northwestern corner of the property, so all the eastern portion of the property, Cedar Crest. That's all the additional neighborhood development, western Cedar Crest, for the most part, is the, the underlying, so. Up in that northwestern corner. North of Huckleberry, there is some open space that's located behind those eight or nine units that. It's blow up here, thank you. So there was some discussion with Parker Rec at earlier meeting. Is there anything that can be done with some of that green space back behind those? So what we looked at was creating. Yeah, there's some grade as there is on most of this, like this grade. But we, at one point, we had added trails all the way to the east end and northern extent of the property. And they asked us to look at whether or not we could potentially grade it in green space. That could be used for. We could be used for, taking a soccer ball, it could be used for just sitting in the sun, but we were able to create a green space in that area. And add a trail that makes a connection. Parker Rec also asked if we could extend a sidewalk to the terrace of the road. There's a vertical access easement that's going to be provided there, and it holds that all location. For a future connection to the, the trail, that would eventually be, because the trail exists on the east side. Or a future connection to the trails on the east side, so that potentially could be used in the road as a. Connection through, but we're going to add that sidewalk as well. But I just thought that was worth mentioning, I don't know, Greg, if you had anything else on that, on this meeting Monday, though, go off on that?
No, not really, that, that was pretty much the gist.
So, so. I was in on Parker Rec, the, the other thing I wanted to bring up was something that we discussed with the public safety. Shall that road? There is an exhibit. Bring that up. I do have a handout to give. I'm just going to be kind enough to hand those out. But, but basically, there was a discussion part with public safety at some point, because this, some of the traffic here. The western portion of the dollar line up there, this roadway. Whether or not there was an option to use the traffic calming along the road. So we looked for. We discussed with the township, and we approved it, that made sense, that was logical here. The handout you have has this, this sketch on it, it also has a couple photographs behind it. You can see what the existing condition looks like. So there's a small park. Located within this area of the roadway. There are stop signs there today, but we're looking to make a safer condition, add. Handicap ramps, the buildings is there today, crosswalk. Painted stop bars. This is an option to. Better delineate the access to park, create an ADA accessible access. Create a safer condition. This is what was discussed, public safety in that basis, they were supportive of the site.
Could we go back for a second just to see where this is in the overall?
Sure. Yeah, well, it's, it's probably going to be awful, it's a lot of planning. Yeah. Yeah, that's where you are. So it separated from the, the development, but the thought was, you know, there'll be some traffic. That will use that roadway, it's a straight roadway. But there was a request to look at there's, to see if there's a, a improvement there that would potentially make the condition safer. Slow traffic. Yeah, it's certainly a stop controlled location, I drove through it before I came here. It's a little hard to notice, you know, some people do this, it's not called now. When we did, when this work is done, it'll be this ADA improvement in addition, we're very clear that there's cross blocks and. I really just want to bring the planning commission's feedback on that, just want to. So outside of that, just on, on outside agency permitting on the product. I think the, the planning commission is aware of the tension here is the face of the product. This is the product, it's been going on for a number of years. Probably at least ten, to build out the product. The, we recently submitted the solar erosion and N P D S application. That would be including the 80 acres or so on the south side. So really, it's focused on the work with the Cedar Crest and Walbert and that, and from the ridge to the south. So that, that application is in as well as a recent mission that we have with the planning commission. At 167 stolen order. We recently coordinated with the post office on nail box locations. Give some more comments from Greg on those locations. There's a good sense where, where the hub close ups wants to take over here. And we had previously coordinated with both Parkland and. School bus locations and bus stop locations, so that's all been, been coordinated, just some work to finish. Finalize those details, but we've got pretty good direction at this point. So are there any questions on where we are on the status of, the general status of the product outside agencies, anything I mentioned so far?
Just to confirm, Dave, did you say that you have submitted again to L V P C?
We have previously submitted to L V P C, we resubmitted recently for the stolen. Okay, so there's, there's no questions just on status there, then I, I guess I would actually really like to talk about the one waiver we're here to speak about tonight. I'm going to bother Jim to grab a handout. There should be a waiver exhibit. To bring up. So we actually spoke about this, and you've seen, you saw this exhibit back there. I just concluded a formal request at this point. So. What's happening here is there was a waiver previously granted for R O D I. And it was just illustrated on the left side, left side of the model. That one is referencing a 2020 submission. The, the more recent roadway alignment is on the right hand side. So this is actually a lessening of the, the original waiver. So this was related to a roadway waiver. Again, it was previously granted. Where we modified. The general layout before the last submission, the most recent one, we were able to lessen waiver. But this is more of an administrative change. It was. The, the original waiver request was a reduction in the horizontal curve of the roadway. From 150 feet to 100 feet in two locations. And a reduction in a tangent in one of the pages, so the G M, your metric way. We were able to approve the condition in one of those locations. So. That's what we're asking, asking you to consider tonight. Again, it's, it's more of an administrative, I don't know. Only because you backed on it previously and we've improved the condition. Raise specific questions the board has on. It appears that the retaining wall goes around the corner further and. Park A two twenty twenty. It's going to be a Texas corner. And you know that height of the wall at that corner? The, the, the wall cases, in the grave, this is, this is one of the larger creative reasons on, on projects. The, the wall here is on whatever 20 feet high. It was previously as well, and that was one of the reasons why this portion of the roadway was less private. But this is, you know, there's fencing here and guy drill there, as well as calculations that will go along with that. How high is the fence in the area of the red? Uh, typically, it's four feet, this is. That's what I expect here, the, the retaining wall details, yeah, sign the retaining wall, that will come up. Okay. Or if somebody can still climb over it. Yes. There are. We can design with the, the chain wall. Yes, and, and again, it hasn't, it hasn't been, it'll get designed to spark building firm applications at some point. And when I say four feet, four feet is generally, and when required by the building code, it doesn't.
The diagram shows that that retaining wall extends further, it's much longer out. Cut off here, so we can't see, but how much further is it going to go? Into the. Behind these houses.
Yeah, it, it does go, it's a certain distance further, it's just a function of the design, so. It's not necessarily related to the roadway, it's related to, let's see, that there's units to be relocated from location. In this, in this, from the previous submission, you configured the roadway. The road J is all over there, so some of the units got shifted over, so it necessitates a wall through there. So you can see also, again, the older layout, there was retaining wall on both sides of R O D I. You're seeing the one that extended on the south side long, but the one, but there was one also on the west side that could be limited. But the overall standard retaining wall design, on versus position difference.
So, so in summary, we, we approved the waiver for R O D I originally. The radius was 100 feet, you improved it to 150 feet. And then at the top rate of the sketch, originally, the road length between. Get to the term is 105, that's now been reduced to 77. So in terms of the overall geometry. In my opinion, there aren't significant changes of radius that actually improved. I, I, I mean, if you grant the waiver, the radius actually previous is.
Second.
Okay, we, we're probably, are there any public comments on this particular waiver? We will be talking about other things, so the other opportunities.
Okay, go ahead and.
Roll call vote Diane Kelly.
May.
Brian Heit.
Hi.
Phil McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tobe.
All right.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Matt Mowgli.
Hi.
Motion passes five to one. Diane. Just for your information, what would be page 63 in the packet, it's the plan sets, that would show the full extent of the retaining wall.
Thank you.
It's plan set C S one of grid.
Thank you.
Is that wall the same height the whole way, or? No, it, it does.
What is the lowest point of that, that wall, front line?
That's bad, very. So if, if you're comfortable, do you want to move on to the other mobility easement? Okay, so Jim has a, has a handout. I don't know, Dave, you want to zoom in on that? Right, we're ready to do that as well. That's the. Connect with the northern and south. Is there a separate exhibit out there? There was a second sheet in there. That you could bring up as well. These. So. There's been a good amount of conversation about the mobility easement. And we've gotten. Correction from the planning commission at a previous meeting. After that B A B did go to public safety. Public safety had, had an opinion. That, well, let me take a second. What I heard from the planning commission the last time we were here, it was informed. Was that in general, they would prefer, we would prefer. Roadway connection through. Public safety was of the opinion in their. Comments that they would prefer to remain in emergency access. The, I also discussed this issue with, with staff, and that's why for this latest. Sketch that I, I handed out. So what's shown on the plan today, what's in the application, is a 20 foot wide emergency access. That was blocking the inside. With a, an inset on the plan that shows how it could have been disrupted, could be disrupted in the future should it want, someone want to like. To 28. This, this thing that discussed, what was the condition of approval? From the condition of use process, and it was a very specific condition. And that's what generated. And it was a very specific condition, and that's what generated the exhibit that's in front of you today. That condition, more recent conversation with staff, where we attempted to as closely follow the condition of approval here. So what the exhibit shows in front of you, prefer to support that option, would be a 32-foot wide carway, along with, with the sidewalk and the, and the trail that's shown, the curving, curved, so effectively 32-foot wide road that would still be considered emergency access, that's a specific condition, but would be constructed to those specifications that were originally envisioned here. But I think what we're looking for, it's really, why you want to like discuss it, is a recommendation going forward from the planning commission, that when we eventually make it in front of the board, we have something formal from the planning commission, this was what we'd like. And so, but the intent of giving you the alternate emergency access exhibit in front of you was discussion with staff and looking back at the original condition, trying to fulfill that.
So this doesn't mean the original?
Yes, I believe it does, yes. Which is, which is again, that it remain emergency access, but that be constructed to the standards and specification that was originally shown back on plan at 2018, which effectively is 32-foot wide roadway.
So I, I see it will be access control so that will prevent passenger vehicles from going through. It's been widened, which especially during snow, emergency vehicles gives them more space. So I think it's an improvement in terms of what I'm aware of, it still can be access I don't have any major objections. It's foremost with unconditional approval, public safety wanted it to be emergency access, and you've taken into account staff comments.
I see that the date on this is June 17th, which is today, this was created today? Yes, it was, oh, yes, it was created based on coordination with, we discussed it last week, but it's created. The public safety haven't seen this particular, no, public safety saw this on the screen, but we discussed, we discussed what their preference was. Again, that was following the last meeting with you, where it was understood that you were looking for a, for road type. This is more about what is the condition of approval say for that, conditional use process, and how we fully adhere to that, which is why we're going through the fall for people like Rick. But also remaining in emergency.
What is the grade of this road?
Between nine and a half.
So what the comments from the public safety letter states that if a roadway is provided in passing, saw those standards for grades and addressed the October 2nd, 2018 comment letter from the 2018 conditional use plan. In the future, if the township wants to desire to convert this to a township road, I am proposing to meet those standards.
Again, I can refer to the condition, and it was under the greater of the purpose of emergency access, or on a standard of.
So essentially, you're saying if we were to have the township turn into a local road, it's not something that you're going to build into this?
I think what happened was we had originally proposed the road between the way of setting grades that control the road. Those roads were a bit high, we were told that it was one of them. But this is, we're back to this, but the planning committee, now what does one, something that can work, so you got to watch that side by that. This was never.
We can't hear you.
This was better than the, the percent green part, and it's not available. So originally, this vision table that left, you said, parcels, there was no way, the way was not that. Then the condition use said, nevertheless, provide that mobility as shown for to the similar specifications as we wanted to fix it on the bridge on the state. So those specifications proved it. So the condition says, design in accordance, as a certain amount of weight, that's what it would be, design in accordance with specifications shown. That, those specifications, so the way we're going, we could have built it as, as active road.
So at our last planning committee, was the competition this board to add a connection between the upper and lower sections of this development.
Yeah, I believe some wanted it to be attached with road, and some did not want it to be attached with road. This is showing it as mobility easement, so it's not a road for public, it's just for emergency vehicles. That's my understanding and my correct.
That's a first because the road, the original road was slowly being. So we don't want to come back, so this, to go to the township, wanted it.
And that's what, what was in the condition, one of the conditions, in the conditional use.
Right, so talking, because we've already denied it as a road.
The same plan as our?
We did it as right. But we, as the township, the package said, but we still want access to the other half of the road, up from the lower half to the upper half. So we asked the developer back, put it in emergency access. If I could perhaps hopefully add a little clarity to the situation as well. It's very hard as, from the word that from this perspective, this exhibit just presented meets the requirements of initial use, condition one E. I'm not suggesting these incorrect in that, but ultimately, that's a call for the township zoning officers to make, whether or not that condition is met. The standard by which the zoning officer will look at that, it's not what her needs current seller standards, or the current zoning standards, or planning condition practices, or public safety condition purposes, recommendations. It's standard coverage, she must judge this, he must judge this, is what her needs condition one E, conditional use, uncle from that. And we will concede, this is new, I'm sitting here for the first time, and it needs to go through that process. We all just, I agree with the town.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Any questions, comments from?
Yeah, I want, I'm Dave Kennedy, I'm on the public safety commission. I just want a, a point of clarification, David, you're saying it's going to be a mobility easement with barricades on both ends, from north to south?
Yeah.
But I just, just want to be sure I understood what you said. I don't need copy.
The sketch we have, both sides, it says access control, labeled as mobility easement, it's labeled for emergency access. It says access control as required by the township, show barriers.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we sold 3731, man, it's a true. So we have, you have what barricades, or what, what, what kind of device so that you're going to stop the public from going down this road, but you're going to allow emergency vehicles in a timely manner to open barricades, get down the road, open another barricade to get, get down the road to get to something? How long does that take?
We'll work with the township on specification for the barrier, whether that's gates, whether that's the chain of bars, whatever the township, we've specified it, what the access control will be, although it don't be access control to the township part.
Okay, I guess, I think the question that I've heard in the past, and originally the plan was to have a tractor road from the upper part of, of, of the development to the lower part of development. And the whole reason for that was to eliminate traffic on Cedar Crest Boulevard and coming down the other side, in the east side of the property, through the neighborhood to get down to the lower part. So I, you know, I understand you were denied, but I still can't believe there's no way that we can make this to grade, because I think you could extend the road out further and, and bring it back and extend it. But anyways, if, if it's impossible, so I guess the question is, is, does the township want an acceptable road that the public can actually drive on and have to deal with the, the grade? Or do you want to have a, knock the access and have more traffic on Cedar Crest Boulevard and the neighborhoods east to get down to the south? That, that's the question that I, I still can't believe we can't get a road with lesser grade going up to that point. So, thank you.
What's the grade of Cedar Crest Boulevard?
It varies, but it's over 11% and so forth. We looked at many of the roads along this bridge when we were, when we originally presented this back in 2018, and all of them were at least 10%.
And I know we've been discussing this for numerous months now, and I personally would prefer it to be a road. I feel that the rate churn out on, on grid view, it's going to push all the traffic into the adjacent neighborhood, and they're going to have to loop around and go up Cedar Crest, which is 10%, anyway, so we'll be going over a 10% road. That's just my personal opinion, if it's an emergency access though, to emergency access, I think it lessens congestion if it's a natural road.
So this, this would do that, that would be up to the township.
As of now, this sketch, it is not a road. I feel we keep going back in circles about this, so it's mobility easement, it's mobility easement, it will be barricaded.
Yeah, just to be clear, this is what the applicant is providing based on the fifth condition of approval, conditional use. At this point, as far as I understand, they have no interest in making this a public road. This appears simply to be an emergency access with the option in the future, if the township so desires it to be converted to a road, it can only be converted to a road if the township desires.
Does it pay for that? Did any people, does the township pay for it?
Well, currently, this would be a private mobility easement, though. But it's also to be designed and constructed at the road, so there would be probably minimal work done to change it to a public road, at least remove barriers, possibly a few other things.
So the way private roads work, I live in a residential subdivision, and we have private roads in HOA is for, and every month, or something, every resident pays, pays an HOA fee, and that, some way it goes for, to pay for trash, cutting the grass, et cetera, but also there's capital reserves that's put aside for maintenance of the private roads, maintenance of the curbing, that's private, maintenance of the stormwater systems, that's private, and it's a good net, it's a well managed HOA, they will have the funds to pay for it. The township is, has no obligation to pay for the air or upgrades of private roads. If they don't have the funds, then there won't be any upgrades to private roads. Anything, anything, someone please correct me.
Well, just to say is actually correct, and I would add, just for the information for the planning commission, if the end result of all this dialogue and decision by the commissioners is that it will be mobility easement as proposed this evening, given the township, under the conditional use decision, would have the right to request dedication that at some point in the future, so it can be turned into a public road, there will be some nuances that will need to address in the planning note and ultimate developer agreements and dedication documents, just to make sure it's handled properly, because HOAs can be treated, and trying to get HOA to deal with this issue 20 years from now, it's not, it could be nightmare.
So it's more than likely to stay as a mobility easement.
Right, the township is firm about wanting to maintain this possibility of becoming a public in the future, if you just need to handle properly this.
Okay, that's what, where it would be set up, so that it could be.
Yeah, so this has, it could be turned into a public road, and I think in that minimal extent, basically, we're saying moving the barriers, if, if the township so chooses.
Your case got blocked in the open position for say a week, might be an interesting ground.
I'm not going to interest in this then.
Yeah, maybe, obviously, the intent of the case is to control access, so the township has control over the issue, and have a different position on that issue. I will say that the roads proposed to the north and south of this aren't intended to be private, personal competition, in game of honor association, but I'm sure that that, that it'll all get addressed in the dialogue.
I think if I understood the terms that you gave us earlier, that this is very stipulated, definitely with the week, if there is some notion that the township would want to take this public road as a vehicle, it's going to have to look at the road, the, that has a, have a little triple pump to be in the end, but.
No, no.
Yeah, there's things that have to be worked, but ultimately, if that were to work out badly, I suspect there's a lot of, that that road. But ultimately, if that were to work out badly, I suspect there's a lot of that at that road. I think that's probably what we're going to do. It originally actually.
What is the length of the road from gate to gate?
Uh, well, scale. Estudia, I will estimate it by 70.
Just to sort of, the ends that go at either end, it ends into road A, does road A go into over there?
Yes, road A, if you're coming up the mobility easement turn right, you would head up towards.
And down at the other end? That's straight through to?
Yeah, that goes straight through the.
It's off the road?
Yes. As part of this exhibit, I also gave you two apartment building A, adjusted the width of road width as proposed here for 2018. So you have, you have consistent cross section.
So it's all third to be?
Yes, from the catch and grid again. It's all third.
Any more comments from the? Yes?
Can I address one here?
Go to the.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Healer. I live over at 30th and High, huh? Oh, 1115 or 30th Street? Allentown, thank you. I live in what was basically Mullenberg Estates, which was set up by General Trexler. And I'm thinking how I want to even word this. As far as I know, all the streets over in my area are municipal and owned by either the city. I'm 100 feet into South Whitehall, so I'm just on the north side of Highland, okay? And I am having an excessive personal quandary about this creation of these private roads on developments. And the fact that the nature of the township is being absolutely annihilated by this project. And I also have concerns about geological concerns of like, all these roads all over this hill with these nine and 10 and 11 and all the way up to 20% grades on going up the where the field is now and then up the hill to the top of Huckleberry Ridge. And then also removals of soil to make retaining walls. Like, this project to me is such such an excessive impact. And everyone here seems to just think that we're just going to go along with this and think it's wonderful. And it's going to change the nature of my neighborhood. And I really get into like upset and anxiety because I have to like, now that I'm retired and thought that South Whitehall was going to be this beautiful place, and you got a fantastic farm over there that kind of anchors what makes this a first-class township. And this idea that there's these private roads and there's public roads, and then you're going to have a homeowner's. I have a homeowner's group where I live, I never needed one. And where I lived, there never was one created back in that timeframe in 1959. And I understand the outdatedness of my comment on one hand. However, looking forward, you know, I did never did ask for this to be utterly urbanized. And the impact of all these roads and all this theorizing about, you know, road A, road I, whether you're going to have an emergency access, how wide it is, who you're going to allow to use it, whether or not it's private, and yet in some future point in time, if the township feels like it, they might make it a township road. Who's going to pay for all this stuff? That it can be, as you said, a sticky wicket, that's a good word, for dealing with homeowner's groups in the future. You're sort of creating a mess. And it's not one that I, as a resident, am very comfortable with. And I'm just looking at this, this isn't even having begun to even happen, along with the build-out of 10 years. 10 years of hydraulic hammers all day, and then all night long, because you're going to have to do widening of Cedar Crest, widening of Walbert, calling it a corridor. And then all night long, you're going to do the street work, and I'm going to have to hear the backup sensors on the trucks, the four o'clock in the morning, smell all the fumes from all the heavy equipment running all over what is right now the nicest, best, quietest part. You're just going to change the climate? We have just learned anything about this time of COVID-19 is that the climate's changing. This project is going to utterly add, take away just the quality of the air, the quality of the life, and everything else here. And the build-out, 10 years. It's never going to get better. It's just going to get uglier, worse, more congested. You're not taking into consideration the removal of all the trees. And then, oh, you're going to put a development somewhere, going to add some trees. You had to buy some trees, you got the trees now. And what about all the traffic on 22? It's like a bowl right over here by Cedar Crest and 22 at this cutoff. And I only live a couple blocks in from that, east of that. I just, you know, every time something's proposed by the builder, everybody here is like, yep, 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 yep. The residents are worried. Whether they're here or not physically, I don't know why they aren't. But I'm here. And I am highly concerned at the impact of this overall and the way this has been going along for like four and a half years now. My stress levels are just going through the roof. This is, this is impact beyond what any people think. See what I mean? It's a little smattering of what's out there. We should have 400 people in here huffing and puffing and saying this is wrong for this township. The way this has been going on since its inception in 2017 has been just kind of, I don't know. It isn't a good fit for the township. It has never been a good fit for the township since day one. We are eaten alive with development. We have filth and trash all over 22. We're going to have more and more traffic fumes. You guys are going to run all kinds of heavy equipment. I used to be a consulting engineer. I used to do job sites, used to sit there and smell diesel all day. Before that, I was in trucking business, smelled diesel all day. I'm not done smelling diesel. When are we going to move ahead? When are we going to have CO2 capture? When are we going to have green space? When are we going to have? You can't just, and this other thing fascinated me. You can give money to the recreation department in place of providing open space. That's really upsetting. I'm sorry, I raised my voice. I'm bummed. I'm highly, but Greg knows, I've chewed his ears off, he's lucky he has ears. But, and to Diane Kelly too, you know, I've thrown some of these questions your way. And the rest of you, I haven't had, you know, the opportunity, the pleasure to maybe make this heard. And maybe I'm taking up a lot of space here, but there is a lot of concern. If this was, let's just say France. The ground itself is called terroir. You can't grow champagne anywhere but the province of Champagne, which would be like South Whitehall. If you get Bordeaux, it's from Bordeaux. If you get Burgundy, it's from Burgundy. They don't let you put in a McDonald's. They don't let you put in a project like this all over it because wine is so important to the economy of France that each area is called a denomination, and you can only produce certain food and agricultural items from that district. The only place that's like that in Pennsylvania is you can only make Lebanon bologna in Lebanon. Every other place is just sweet bologna. So there needs to be some considerations. We've gone from 80% rural in 1970 to under 20% now. And here you have the last great rural spot, which really should be an educational place. Kids don't even know how to drive a tractor. They don't know anything about agriculture. I'm a horse owner, I've told you that before. To see all these places that were just 50 years ago, open space or a farm or this or that, and to just have it all snapped up by the developers. And it just seems like us residents really have no say. It's like, just pay your taxes and be cool, and the developers can come in and tear up everything, they can make traffic everywhere. What's left for young people like this young man here? What are we leaving them? What legacy is this? I don't want tiki-tack housing all over the place. I don't need endless rows of tan, the same old, the same old, the same old, the same old. You know, age restricted. I'm 67, Sunday I turned 60. I don't need how to be told. I don't need an age-restricted area to live in or anything. My house is bought and paid for, and I've been there most of my life. And there's just like the older neighborhood, which is quiet and pretty and peaceful. And each house has a different flavor to it. And the lay of the land is a certain way. And there's a certain ambiance and quietness to that. This has no quietness. This is an in-your-face insult to us sitting here. Thank you.
I'm sorry I feel that way, but it's in my heart, and I can't hold it in anymore. Thank you.
I think we'll do for, you know, what's our view of this? Continue.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I'd like the zoning officer to confirm that this plan complies with a conditional use approved by the commissioners before I made it. Any other comments? So.
I have a comment. I would like to see the developer meet our standards for solid construction. I understand the need to connect, and I understand the township decided to do that to relieve pressure on these surrounding roads. But certainly, before shovels them around, I would ask that they consider taking a look at redesigning and making this work so that it makes sense for everyone before we proceed. That's my comment.
And any other comments? I think we need to hear what you can do. And also, zoning officer, make sure that this.
Sure, and I almost agree with the with the need for the zoning officer. That person has jurisdiction to make that call. So we're. With respect to making the roads more you know, in the interest of getting past this, I'm going to do what they want. If I want to comply with that 30%, that should not be happening.
I don't hear you.
That is not going to comply with 5% rates. It never could, and it will. Just as many of the roads in the township do not. Just as many of the roads and plants that have recently been approved by the township exceed those grids. For some reason, this particular piece of ground became a safety cap. Was not allowed to exceed that 5%. For the reasons, I can only speculate, I'm not going to do that now. If this was held to a higher standard than the other development in this township, if our roads recently were planned in this township that exceed grade 1, that exceed grade 2, or are existing roads in the township, we got rid of the sticky 1, the grade 2.
Is it bigger?
We will. I'm talking, thank you.
We can't hear you, though.
Well, this is as loud as I can. So the, the we need to, we need to filter it. You can't keep kicking this giant on the book. We will design this as directly as we can. This commission is going to revisit this conversation. Would you come back now and you wanted to see something that would be closer to the road standard? To turn to the width of the road and so forth? We've got as close as we can get. And we cannot meet that grade requirement. To be honest with you, I don't, well, I can't, I'm not sure the reason why. There are certain people who want to stick to that grade requirement for this particular block. If there's nowhere else, I'm not sure why. I can't really say for sure, but somebody had to try. But I would tell you, we could have commented all of this at this, at this level. But here we are. We will take as close as we can, we're trying to accommodate what you're looking for. We'll make this as wide as we can, and as close as we can for this the township treat of similar specifications as the one that's picking on the road from which one state. This means, I'm going to tell you why, because I'm not the zoning officer, you're going to prepare the process. That this will need to. Because those didn't meet the township's standards. That was the issue. That road did not meet the township's standards. This one, if this one matches that one, then this will not match the township road's energy, because that didn't do. So there's no way we're going to fit this, we're going to put a G in that involved. I don't know how to do it.
You're talking about the grade?
That's the only thing I think that's outstanding, is that right?
Yes, in my opinion, that.
That's it, we're down to the grade.
Okay, so let's get the township's zoning officer to confirm.
I agree.
And then we'll do that and bring it back.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, but we keep showing around this and all around this. We have to, not going to do that. So we have a couple of options, we can turn into an active, oh, I'm sorry. Or we have this, a lot of ways around. But to say that it has to meet the township's grades, and yet we still want specifications as the one that was denied because any townships raises it, it doesn't base it. And this is not, that's a fact.
Just to respond for the record, as the planning commission member, I had never voted for a road to go in excess. So you might be speaking of developments for my comments, commission. I just want to clarify that.
So continue, there are a couple other subjects, I believe. At least one other one is the the school where?
Please give a direction, I have no direction. Do you have a direction?
The waiver, we have to discuss the waiver with the acting one. Yeah, I can have it, because I'm only having.
I can't have it all, I'll say that Tony particularly of our county has. We understand that. I think we made very good progress on the consulting reviews. They have a number of, I know, I understand our couple issues that we, that Tony and I have worked out together. But one of them being the downstream stormwater that we've discussed before, and we're attempting to go back and do that recent plans one more time, and go back in August to make sure of that.
And that, you're talking about the school?
Yes, the school where, yes.
The other one is, is Dawes Street, where the odds and the Austin Buckman. The access. Your plans are dependent on having a number of you know, types of housing, and that's a critical piece of it. you know, types of housing, and that's a critical piece of it.
Aren't you going to take particular phase in the plan? That's... The plan is phased, so that piece is a standalone part of the plan. We don't control that access yet, but we would fully expect that that would be a condition of approval of that.
So, if you don't, if that doesn't get built, that section, that doesn't impact your rest of your plan, P and D, or...
No, I don't.
I would respectfully disagree. Yet, basically, one of your, unless, unless you can tell me otherwise, one of your density bonuses was the third type of housing. And that was specified as meeting a certain proportion, which is, I understand, you are exactly at that proportion right now.
Yes, you're right, I didn't specifically look at it. That's a good point, I didn't know that, that question.
Yeah, so, I would definitely say, at least where it stands now, to sell this at a future phase, that would not work. Because if we can't build that, then your P and D is no longer subject to plan. So, that's going to be sold, work on their plan rule. Unless you can prove something otherwise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd love to screen this, we would have to prove to you the base, we need to stay.
Yes, correct.
No argument.
Okay. So, that's very dependent, it's more than just that area that's dependent on the access to that area.
I understand.
Okay. All right. I think that's all the subjects, and you wanted to, we've spoken on the road, I think we did it. Who did?
I'm very glad we did.
We did well. We did well. All right. Anything else?
Brad, I think you... I think you have time, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, we're good with that.
We're down with this, Brad, Paul, we'll take that.
Okay. People, most cases, you take it in. You got motion? Roll call.
Roll call vote, Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Don't get there.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Matthew Holman. Motion has been fixed, is there?
Is there a back office?
Yes, the intent is to address some of these, some of the issues that are in the letters, back office.
Okay. I assume the zoning officers and practitioners have got to be able to determine their side.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, we move on to zoning laws amendment. Low impact, low impact home based business.
Will there be another plan that has a place for a stormwater? We're not...
They are going to revise the plan and come back and go on.
Can I make a comment before they go?
Yes, you can. Three minutes time.
Okay, sure.
Me too. Okay.
Again, stormwater. What I looked at, the plot plan that was up here and also out there, and I've been looking at this for four years. I'm really wondering about the wisdom of having this massive field along Walbert Avenue, on the north side of Walbert Avenue, which is more or less like a sort of a flood plain. Because you've got the hill, and then you have this long slope to Walbert Avenue. And I'm questioning the wisdom of putting twelve or thirteen flat-bottomed detention ponds, where there is now a field that does a fabulous job of absorbing the water, and there's no runoff, hardly ever, unless there's this extreme precipitation of water running across Walbert Avenue at any given time in the year, whether it's hurricanes, whether it's in the spring, and there's a spring thaw, and there's water flowing south, right off of that hill, across Cedar Crest, or across Walbert, towards like the Roma Building. And, and I just am appalled that you would place these, these at least twenty-foot-deep detention pond basins, whatever retention ponds, however you want to word it, comes by that various descriptions. And then have guys go out there from the maintenance department with a lawnmower, and make this thing flat, go out there, have to like mow the grass, and create all these like dozen big swimming pools to collect water from this massive development. And you're going to wreck the geology of this whole place. That's actually a hard point over there, where we're right to the side of Cedar Crest Boulevard, and there's a little like divot in the hill. There's a hard spot. I don't know if you guys know anything about like Hazelton Formation Rock, or like Richardson Formation with its like almost diamond-like hardness of like eight or nine on the Mohs scale. It's insanely hard. When you're out on a job site, and you're listening to them with a hydraulic hammer, I'm going to be rude and say pecking rock, because that's what everybody says in construction. And you hear this, that, 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 ding, 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 ding. Man, you hit the Richardson Formation. There's a water table over there. I really don't want to be told five years from now, you know what, you can't water your lawn anymore, because we had to accommodate this development, after my house has been saying sixty-two years. I'm just saying, this is too much impact. This is the ruination of the most pristine part, and that the size and scope of this project is ridiculous. And to put in detention ponds and wreck everything, and create mosquito holes is beyond my comprehension, which at this point is not much. But thank you again.
He has...
Just a simple question, because I know, Dave Tomasic, sixteen thirty-six North Twenty-Eighth Street, right by Grandview Cemetery. When we were having these phone-in meetings the last couple of times, I tried to ask the question about Huckleberry Road and Cedar Crest, the top of the hill. Is that going to be playing down?
Yes, it's going to be reprofiled.
How, how much, enough that these tractor trailers?
I don't...
Because there's accidents there every week.
Yeah, it's good.
It's one after another.
It's going to be signalized, and it will be reprofiled. I can't answer without the traffic engineering plans on how, how much of the reprofiled, and it's probably...
I mean, that's to be significant, because it is trucks.
It is pretty significant.
And the other, and the other question I'm going to have for you is, you know, where I'm at Twenty-Eighth and Walbert. There's accidents there now, there was an accident there yesterday again. You know, it's just awful the traffic there. And we get two times a year, and that's nothing anybody can do about it, when the sun is shining right there, where nobody can see. And everybody has driven through that already. And, and the other question, I also, I know that other road from Office, whatever that Office were going out to, to Cedar Crest. You know, you got to take into consideration buses, tractor trailers on that road. You know, you get a couple of them, and all of a sudden, nobody can pull out. And I know you want to put that circle, that triangle in, and nobody can turn left coming out of, out of the development. Well, you got to go by Applebee's. Every day I see them turn left, we're not supposed to turn left. They had their freaking triangle there, they had a sign there, they plotted a sign over, they just pull over. They just turn left constantly there. And to think they're not going to do it on Walbert, forget it, they're going to do it.
Good evening. My name is Ron Washburn, I live at eighteen oh six Roosevelt Street. I border Buckman and Roosevelt. So, the road that they are going to put into their development is probably about twenty feet from my house. I have three handicap placards in my family that have to use the street there to park on. I also have a blind grandchild that lives with us. So, I am interested how this is going to impact our lives with that road going through right next to our house. And that's pretty much all I have to say, but, you know, I'm not really used to these meetings and stuff, so. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the zoning laws amendment for low impact, low impact home based business.
All right, we've seen this a number of times before. What I hope to go for the audience, since we're now here live, and I can hear your background. With the ongoing within any trading shifts and business models, that has noticed the increase in requests for home-based businesses or township. Township's current ordinance was last amended in two thousand and two to accommodate the change from the P A M P C permitting no impact home-based businesses.
Speaking of, could you take the conversation with the panel of rooms?
Excuse me?
Sir. That's hard.
All right.
I have a big question.
Moving on. Okay. Yes. The township's current ordinance was last amended in two thousand and two to accommodate the change in the P A M P C permitting no impact home-based businesses. That will find that it is not advisable to deviate from the regulations that stipulated the M P C, and propose to amend said section to maintain greater consistency with the M P C. That then develops the following new regulations to permit home-based businesses that, while maintaining compatibility with and appearance of impacted residential use in accordance with the intention of the no-impact home-based business regulations. These will permit home-based businesses that exceed certain standards that no-impact home-based businesses regulations with zoning hearing board review and approval. And that's, that's the critical point here. These new standards would account for businesses that may no longer comply with the proposed no-impact home-based business section, such as music teachers and the like. The proposed new section, low-impact home-based business, would allow public notice and comment on each proposed home-based business. Would allow zoning hearing board to review each proposed home-based business in the context with the surrounding neighborhood, and would allow the zoning hearing board to impose additional conditions upon the home-based business as part of the approval process. So, basically, I break it down into two things. Right now, we have a no-impact home-based business in our zoning ordinance. It is close to what the P A M P C standards are, however, not exactly the same. And there's a number of, the salient differences are between the M P C and our current. Subsection one was originally included to maintain a township municipal record of no-impact businesses based within the township. This is the requirement for the zoning permit for no-impact home-based businesses. The P A M P C does not have that requirement. The second one is that our land, our language, allows for a no-impact home-based business to employ non-residents of the property, so long as they don't work at the property. This is not permitted within the P A M P C regulations. So, what we're doing is making these changes so that our no-impact will be much more consistent with the M P C. Now, in order to do that and deal with the businesses that may currently be no-impact, but would no longer comply, we created the low-impact home-based business. This will allow certain more things to happen at a residence, from a business point of view. But every one of these would require special exception approval by the zoning hearing board. So, in order for somebody to have a low-impact home-based business, they would have to apply to the zoning hearing board, and submit a number of standards that they would be having there. For example, if they were having an employee, and who that employee might be, and when they would be on-site. They would have to address traffic, any parking issues, any increase in weight proposal, or something along those lines, deliveries. Something that would definitely impact the residential rent. That way, they would be put on record, would be noticed for this, so that all of their, at this point, all of the neighbors within three hundred feet of that would get a notice in the mail, given the opportunity to come to the zoning hearing board, review what is being proposed within their neighborhood, and make comment to the zoning hearing board for their consideration. The applicant would then be forced to go before the hearing board, and submit testimony to show what they would be doing. And the zoning hearing board would be able to put additional conditions upon the business to mitigate any issues they see with this not being of a residential character. So, that is the new low-impact home-based business, and we're allowed.
Basically, low-impact, you have to be ready. Low-impact, you're allowed, wanting to operate, they have to go to home.
Correct. You could have none, but you're permitted at most one. The other thing is that no-impact home-based businesses do not allow visitation from the outside, customers, stuff like that. This wouldn't allow that. But once again, to be reviewed by the zoning hearing board, so they may set limits on number of clients, where they might park, they might be required to park on-site, they might limit business hours of operation, signage, lighting, floors. So, that's what this was.
Great. Does this affect current home-based businesses or low-impact businesses? Will they have to go through this process to reconfirm themselves as a home-based?
They may have to. Basically, I think there is some grandfathering involved in here. So, anything that is currently listed as a no-impact home-based business, I believe would continue under that. We don't have many that are actually, that went through the process, got its own permit to do that. Our current regulations state that when the current owner of the home-based business moves, that extinguishes that right for a no-impact home-based business. So, if a new person moved in, they would have to go through the process as well.
So, if that, having been on the zone for three years, you're not performing, you continue to be not performing. There's no changing, you're not performing typically on the zoning ordinance. You don't have to, unless you change the condition, change something about it.
And for the most part, our current no-impacts only, the no-impact home-based business, there's only two real issues at stake here. One was the requirement to get a permit that's different from the M P C. We are still maintaining that. The other one, big difference, is in the area of, say, music teachers. There is an exception within our current no-impact, no-impact home-based business that does allow visitation by clients, so like music teachers, or I think tutors is another one. We would remove that. So, anyone who has that type of business still in the township, if it's registered with the township, they don't change their conditions, they can keep that. But if they do change, then they would have to go to the zoning board to update their approvals.
The current path right now is to go through just the zoning laws.
Correct.
And they make that determination.
They make that determination, so long as it complies with our regulations.
Correct. So, I just have a follow-up. You, zoning board, could impose restrictions or conditions based on traffic, parking, number of clients, hours of operation, that sort of thing. I'm just curious, how do we set a consistent standard so that home business A is part of town, and home business B is part of town, are held to different standards for those, and is there a way that we have a template, so that we've got a basic for what we expect from the business in the neighborhood?
Actually, no, this is actually the opposite. We want everything judged in context with the neighborhood, because every neighborhood is different. And something like if you lived up against a hill, where it's larger lots, not much else going on up there, something that is... Something that is sensible for that neighborhood might not be sensible for an area south of Walburg, uh, in a denser location. So we, we built this so that every business can be, um, reviewed within the context of the neighborhood it sits. Because not all neighborhoods are the same, in fact, are all different. They all show a different quality either. Yeah, they're all situated. And that is the point of this. We, we do have the standards listed. One of the overarching standards is that even the low impact home based business cannot. Stand out from the residents as being a business. It must build looks and feel and operate like a business. And that is our, that is our, that is our gold standard. We want.
You know, kind of when we, when we discussed the whole, I want to know that was, that was one of the things we asked back, go back and check. Not every, not every neighborhood is the same. So there, there may be a hybrid.
Right. So what's the avenue of appeals if someone gets an unfavorable zoning, um, opinion? And they can point to maybe a few blocks away, maybe their neighbors weren't quite as sensitive and they're.
Well, it'd help to answer that one because that's a.
A special exception course goes in for the zoning hearing board. If someone was not like a decision board, they can appeal to that court, please. Add one more point to Greg's motion. If there are specific standards, as you suggested, Diane, that you ought to apply across the board. Those should be identified as the objective standards in the ordinance. And an example that's already there is one non resident employee may be permitted onsite any more time. As objective standards, leave orders to apply for all of the low impact residential businesses. But when you get into the more subjective items later on in this ordinance. Things that Greg was talking about uniqueness of the property and neighborhood. That's really the hallmark of what zoning is all about. Every zoning decision is based upon each property being unique. And so that's the whole idea behind it is. You asked the question about, can somebody come in and say, well, they're three blocks away and they retrieve it differently than I was. Uh, certainly property owners and their attorneys can hold a party. But from a legal standpoint, every single learning obligation is unique. And you can't say that because it was created for them, you have to grant me that kind of precedent.
Thank you. And I want to follow up. Sorry, I have so many questions, but, um. You just mentioned the property owner and their attorney. So they're going to have attorney plus there's only. Right now, they go to their zone officer. What is their avenue of appeal if they are not pleased with the zone officers?
To the zoning hearing board.
So they have within our township another, um. Avenue for relief or to be heard. And with this, we're going to go from our zoning hearing board to the court of law.
See, as I understand it, uh, from Greg, the no impact. Home based business will go to the zoning officer. The low impact will go to the zoning board. And the no impact, if the property or decision ruling of the zoning officer would then.
Bring my question on the no impact. Does, does that need to have a problem? To me, it seems like you're having a whole layer of anybody that has zoning needs. You know, is anybody, you know, working at her home for business need to go for. Permit, this is only here almost. My opinion is no impact should be, you know. Unready, you know, you have to comply with that. And some will bring up that they aren't applying to that. And, but my opinion. Uh, that's not necessary. And it's a big change in a lot of, a lot of home businesses where people that use their home for business. Uh, whether it's their own business or other businesses. I, I just. Think that's a lot of regulation. It's not necessary. I think it makes sense for the low impact, but I think if you meet the conditions for no impact, you know, no, no need for.
It, I think the difference between somebody using their home as. Office space and doing meetings, they don't have a registered business. So I think what this is really at our point is a no impact registered business that they're have.
Yeah, but you, you happen to do, you do your business principally at Panera Bread. And as soon as you look at a piece of paper that regards that business.
It's usually registered business at triple manner. That's what triggered it. So like, I was doing consulting a lot back in business, my home address was my business address. And that was an LLC and that LLC was registered at that. At my home. In this example, that would be a no impact home based business and I would submit a zoning permit. Um, under these regulations. That makes sense. So like if you're just. Doing work for your normal employer and you, you know, go down the whole, uh, narrow. That would apply, but it's when you register and the, the kind of flip side of that is it also. Relates to great business privilege license. So we have a thing, if you have a business in the township, you have to register for business privilege license. So the zoning, knowing the zoning permit and the business privilege license kind of go hand in hand. It can't have one without the other almost.
What are the costs?
What are the costs for those licenses?
I'm not sure. That, that's finance. I think the application is like thirty five dollars and then it's based on income. It's a percentage of your income.
That's the tax that is actually happening on the license.
Okay, so you have the tax, okay.
I have one other question. Um, one of the. Things under the low impact states that only committed in a single detached dwelling. So someone living in a. Is not allowed to have any sort of low impact.
Correct. And that was a suggestion of mine. You can revisit that if you like.
Yeah, I would, I would raise that. That was, you know, bothering across nine hundred years. As someone who no longer lives on a single detached dwelling, you know, suppose I wanted to have a low impact. This was my place. I can't afford this. I can have a low impact. Because I may choose to walk by climb and come visit me every now and then. Tell me I'm doing a good job or not. And tell me my goal is, I can't. So I have a question. It's a really hard one, it's a hard question.
I think the same.
And I have no issue with that because the point is that the zoning hearing board will review each of these in the context of the neighborhood. I thought there was some concern that, for example, townhouses might be too dense for, um, you know, the parking requirement. But once again, the zoning hearing boards were really within context. That's what we want to. You know, let them see what the neighborhood likes and. Put additional conditions on or something like that can be. So I, I have no issue with opening that at all.
Really, I think clause D, you would take that option away from the zoning hearing board. And instead we want them to consider each neighborhood individually, so. Be consistent in that proposal. We removed clause E I B of the proposed regulation and I will carry it for the rest of it.
Could I? Say that instead of removing clause B, simply strike single detachment?
Yeah, but let me read it. I thought I was mentioning that in a different community where it serves these zoning hearing boards, consider. The low impact business special exception approach has been used for about twenty years. And it's worked very well. It's actually one of those kind of applications in front of the zoning board.
I guess that was my question. Is, is our current process of going through the zoning laws or? Now, that we've got an avenue that we've used for quite some time and they've got a second avenue to go before zoning hearing board. Is that not? Sufficient enough?
I think because of the, the. Because of how the zoning hearing board is, is set up, you can only grant, you have sort of standards to grant variance from. So if you have somebody who is close to a no, no, the current no impact on this business, but does not comply. They would then be seeking a variance at the zoning hearing board. And there are fairly high standards for having a variance granted by the zoning board. This would instead make it a special exception, which is a permitted use, but allows the zoning hearing board to. Review in context and put additional conditions upon it. So. Once again, this becomes something that is a permitted use. It's just. It, it's an easier process. More short process. Um, somebody who doesn't need the current no impact home based business. Is unlikely to get a variance to allow them to do what they want to do.
If I could just take you back, the other thing that, um, our zoning officer has mentioned, and I think she mentioned it in one of the meetings is. She's gotten a lot of calls, um, for no impact home based business. And as soon as they say, we have. You know, one visitor at a time, it can't be done. So she just tells them right up front, you know. If you can apply, it will be denied. Um, so she's had to turn away a lot of potential businesses that way. So that, that's just gives you a little bit of background.
I can understand that. I guess I'm just a little bit hesitant to, um. You know, going before zoning hearing boards, it's a possibility to still appear in. I'm just trying to need or to consider. Um, not putting too much of an added expense on a business, a new business on the front end with needing attorney and needing to seek. As only hearing. And if they're not happy with the decision, they've got to appeal to the courts. That's. I just wondered if that comedian, that we can do something that. These certain categories can still go through the zoning officer, um. Split it so that, and so if I want to fell swoop for anybody that's got one visitor, let's say, in a county. Has one visitor a week, is he in the same category as someone who. Is a music teacher and has five students a day, five days a week? I just wonder if there's a way to. To add in something that. Very little impact as opposed to, you know, I'm not.
I hope you're trying to say unfortunately, it, it really does go back to context. Um, because what works, I mean, right now, you can be a music teacher and. Literally have half a dozen students come in and play drums for two hours. Um, and you can do that in a townhouse. Uh, it, it, I, I think what you're getting at, unfortunately, trying to focus something so tightly. Becomes both difficult to do and a matter of taste. And one of the things we really don't want to get into is defining taste. We want to be objective. Um, and unfortunately, this really does feel like something that is subjective and we need. Uh, a platform for that. And zoning hearing board is the appropriate platform within the zoning board now. I, I will say that for the most part, and that maybe you can back me up on this, and Joe as well. Most residential special exceptions, I think, don't generally have a, um, an attorney involved.
No, yeah, it was funny when I came about. It's pretty straightforward. But I think I would suggest that the board then has the ability to put conditions out. That, that's what they're going to do. They're going to probably approve the issues. And the very important should be that way if these neighborhood citizens. There's not going to be a lot of need to work on these.
Yeah, and I, I think the, the point of having notice, having the neighbors come out, if, if all neighbors are welcoming of this business, that's, that's one thing. However, if none of them are. That's quite another. And we want, we want the neighbors to have, have that say because it's their neighborhood as well.
And the zoning board necessarily has to be public. As far as the zoning officer.
Yeah. We are two zoning officers. And why can't they give a determination? And then the next day, the same situation, we determine that that would apply to the other ones.
Yeah, well, even the neighbors may never know that because they're right after. But I think those are current work, that's the house and the neighbors have, it's like, we are there not to come to. Be present in here, ready and all those thoughts.
Can I address that point a minute that you just said? Okay, I live on that side of the, but, um, but my point, I, I guess. And I know you have to send out the letter to, to the three hundred foot radius. I, I get them all the time for other stuff. But my question is. Not so much where I live, okay, but if you're in a more condensed area. There may be a neighbor that wants to speak out but not. Be identified. So would they have an option or an opportunity to present a case without identifying themselves directly? Uh, I mean, I don't want to be a neighbor a, a, and, and, and say to this guy, hey, I don't want you consulting in my, you know, my neighbor. I don't want him, you know, but, but I have to be his neighbor. Yeah. Okay. So it's just a point that, you know. Could, could there be a way that maybe that he could identify or she identify themselves to the zoning officer or to the board, but not necessarily to. The neighbor. That's just a point.
I, I don't believe so. And, and quite frankly, under the American system of governance, uh. You have the right to.
Your accuser, but we're not, all right.
And so if somebody's going to, you know, be ill with their business. I think you have the right to address that.
Okay, Greg is actually right. Under the municipal plan code and case laws developed around it. The zoning process, whether it be in front of zoning hearing board, a variance, a special exception. Or in front of or commissioners, when they condition use, is what's referred to as a quasi judicial proceeding. And as such. All evidence must be presented at a public hearing. And there is an opportunity for the applicant to cross examine the persons who speak out, should they wish to do so. There is no anonymity allowed. And that's just simply the way the system needs where we operate.
And the other piece of this is relates to code enforcement. So one of the things that we have with the current process is a business can move in and nobody knows about it. The neighbors don't know about it. So you get calls, request for investigation, what's going on. So we have. Issues related to that. Um, so the idea of bringing it into a public process, notified neighbors, so that everybody's on the same page and understand what's happening. The other piece of it is the code enforcement officer. Then has conditions laid out by the zoning hearing board, has a clear enforcement direction and standards. Um, there's no interpretation, it's very clear. Um, so the idea is. On the one hand, people are notified of it. So there's less of the what's going on. Request for investigations. Then the other one, there's a clearer. Enforcement standard from the zoning hearing. So those are kind of the, that other piece of it. Is that we deal with on a daily basis is these, you know, code enforcement, question or investigation of these all base businesses.
The other thing I'll mention, as Paul took, Dave just said, and your question is, you can be. In quasi judicial proceedings such as zoning proceedings. The technical rules of evidence for court then apply. There is one exception to that and it's hearsay. Properly objected to hearsay cannot be allowed to become part of the record in zoning proceeding. So by way of example, if someone, it's sort of common in zoning proceedings for a resident to send a letter. They'll say, I can't make it that night. Here's my letter. Please consider this. The zoning board can consider that unless the applicant objects. The applicant objects, that cannot be considered a business technical hearsay. Sometimes see petitions presented with two hundred residents signing something. If the applicant objects to a zoning proceeding, that petition cannot be considered. This is, and have your statement made to truth of the merits served, that's just purposes. Any other comments?
Lee Sol, thirty seven thirty one Manchester Road. I noticed that the hours of business was taken from the from the, from, why was that done and?
Once again, when it goes before the zoning hearing board, one of the things that you say in subsection J is that they need, the applicants need to submit testimony on a number of things, one of them is to post our operation. So they can submit that. If it's in a rural setting, perhaps the neighbors have no issues with, you know, going past that. On the other hand, if it's a family neighborhood that's quite dense, perhaps five o'clock is the more sensible limit there. So this, this allows the zoning hearing board to see the context, hear the neighbors, and make a decision as to what is sensible for our operation.
Okay, so they're common house, you have three hundred feet as the radius for notification. But, at this point, but, I know, so we're talking about that, but also, it, it varies, again, depending upon where the, the person lives. If they're in a townhouse community, that's a lot of people. If they're in a rural community, that's one person maybe, or could be none. So is there a way to do it in terms of two or three residents on either side, across the street or wherever, and behind, as compared to a, a distance?
Well, unfortunately, this goes to the special exception requirements of the zoning board, so that's, that is for all specials, which I believe it's all for all zoning individuals, is the, and noticing requirement. So it's three hundred feet whether you, a special exception for a low impact home based business, or if it's you seeking a variance of twenty feet from the back or setback. It is what it is.
I, I just, it just doesn't make, you know what I mean, it just doesn't make sense. It's three hundred feet, if you live in a place where there's nobody, you have three hundred feet either side, but nobody gets notified. But if you live in a townhouse, fifty people might get notified. So it doesn't make sense.
Well, and really the issue, that should be addressed with the public notice.
Right.
Because your argument applies to.
Everything, yeah. And we've discussed that within the township of how to change that, and we're in the process of doing that. But just for this example, that's what I want to bring up, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, if you live. Yes.
Yeah, there are, the MBC is not, any of us to adjoining or different property, it's a two hundred feet property or whatever. So they were just deciding that.
Just a practical question, when we would need to notify, for example, in a townhouse development, how would the township get, we have through the water, water system, or I mean, is there a way to that?
It's typically the refuse bill. And then we also can use the county parcel data, is the other piece that we use. Generally, utility building has a more current ownership.
I think more renters.
Yeah.
So instead of going to the property owner, you're gonna look up to the renter to make that.
Correct. Certainly, that's how they, they, it's a system for renter and landlord.
I know at one point, we actually hit both. So fairly comprehensive.
They're typically a big less. So you probably, the county parcel or maybe, yes. So like, if there's no bill, then we'll use the parcel.
If South Whitehall sends notices not just to the neighborhood to renters, to residents, that's much more the most used now, they're usually just owner. And sometimes it might just be those account for it. It's just about renters. Any other comments? I guess the motion to what do I do, that's, send us word to the.
Word, yeah, clean it up. The only thing I heard here was to strike single detached from three fifty forty eight H four E Romanet one B. Good to do your job, I'll make a motion that the division will save.
One second.
We'll call the vote. Diane Keller.
I'm on the fence on this one, I'm gonna say me.
Okay. Brian, I am.
Hi.
Don't get me.
I still have trouble with the no impact business requiring, or I'll stay on.
Alan Tobe.
All right.
David Wilson.
Hi.
I think over. Motion passes, five to one. Thank you, that was longing for first, but hopefully it'll be worked well. We will obviously, as we do with all zoning, I mean, as the zoning ordinance in general, we keep tabs on how these things work. So if something is not functioning, we will come back to you with a further amendment.
All right. Move on to agenda item number six, transportation infrastructure company. Thank you. I'm actually gonna steal some things right from probably Barack himself, but they intended the, the meeting they put on and traffic has now reached a level as great as pre-COVID. Orders are still down, but trucking commerce is up, so shop local, you know, by local plane, I guess. The other thing is, is that we are in a current tip cycle, which is twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four, but surprisingly, the next cycle starts to begin to get different projects, update on the next tip cycle. So I'd say within the next year, we should probably go through, see what projects that are on the list and lobby if we, if we choose to. For some of those products in the township that could really affect us and attract that money from Pendo to be those products. So I think within the next year, we'll probably list and do what we can to get some of our projects funded.
Will our comprehensive plan timing work for that, I think it does, but I just want.
I, I would think so, yeah, sure, definitely. I think it would be pretty complex and probably be a good start to identify some of those projects.
Say, so if we're confident to say it's done by December this year.
Sure, that one, okay. To get a chance to look at, we have our planning commissions, future, we need comprehensive plan for the whole we are now in this section in back in this transportation funding of the long range transportation. In order for a project normally to get into the tip of the transportation program where I'll come from and say, it's got to be in the long range plan first, unless insurance situation like, or state concern like the three hundred pound street, you know, that got, it was a state concern. So even if, anything you would want to do within the township that we just submitted and put into the tip, the long range plan would be on that needs, but somewhere it's not in that top. It's basically a wish list. The process has got to start somewhere. I, I'm shy of that.
So we should put everything in.
And every place we need to put it in our common plan with the transportation section, because that is embedded locally, you know, my question is this. We have our transportation study, we have the effort, but we are out. And it's got, we're able to, they just, we have a comment submitted by the public.
Great, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
It's a really small facet of, of the traffic part that you were discussing. But I, I am basically appalled at the amount of filth and trash and litter and mess all along twenty two. And also Cedar Crest a little bit, but some of the, some of our main but auxiliary roads, Well Traveled, Walbert maybe, and others in, in the township and in just general western Lehigh. Who, who do you go to before you go and build more roads or add to an already existing problem? And you were, you were kind enough to just mention that traffic is now up to beyond even pre-COVID levels, which I was, I didn't think it was that far along, but apparently you would know. What do you do about this litter? It, it, I mean, I don't just mean little, little bits of paper. I mean, like chairs and, and, and recaps from truck tires and, and all kind, and you know, plastic antifreeze bottles, and there's this like serious trash. Does, does the, 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 the highway commission, or maybe the, I don't think the township has, has other than the road maintenance, it's not for them to go and like clean up. But these main roadways, is, is there anything done to address this? Because when I was a kid, this state was gorgeous. Absolutely flat out, one of the prettiest states in the whole country, and I've been to forty five to fifty states, okay? And, and now I see it getting really messy. It's looking more and more like, like metropolitan New York City and, and a good swath of New Jersey. There are, to be kind, if there's any Jersey people, there are some nice, pretty parts of Jersey. But they're so really awful messy and degraded. We are now starting to become urbanized and degraded, and the amount of trash that I'm seeing is, is upsetting. How, how do you, as a resident, I'm just posing a question, how is that dealt with? Because I don't have any idea.
No, that's, that's a good question. I think most of the roads you're speaking of are state roads.
Okay.
So it's mostly maintained by Pendo. I think township public works does a great job.
They, they do. Yeah, South Whitehall's ma- maintenance people are, have been very, very good. I have no complaints of that, I'm just saying the general, like the main roads, just, who do you appeal to? Do I, I contacted the, the highway commission, or what do you do?
Full disclosure, I've worked for the planning commission and also for the transportation studies.
What was it, I'm sorry, the Lehigh Valley?
Transportation study.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
I was on a conference call earlier this week with the Secretary of Transportation, Yacine Gravina. He shared your concerns and what has happened is they stopped picking up trash all through COVID. And now they're trying to get back up to getting volunteers and you see the signs along roads and of these groups that were going out picking up trash. They were using some incarcerated individuals that get out of prison for the day, pick up trash. They're starting to try to ramp up those programs. Pendo is still closed, they're still doing virtual stuff until the end of July. So there's, she sees it, she's upset like you are about it, and they hope to address it.
And the lady's name is Yasmin?
Yasmin Gravina, she's the Secretary of Transportation for the state.
Is she in Harrisburg?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, but we'll move on to item seven, the comprehensive plan update, any additional?
Not really, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Do you, you know the like Jacobs of the working groups? Like, are you sure of anywhere, or before populated that way? We were pretty balanced right then, last time we checked. We set out a reminder to sign up for working groups. Working groups are voluntary, so we're asking for citizen input to get involved in a topic area that you're interested in. So the topic areas are based on the MBC. So we have resource protection, housing, community facilities, community utilities, and that's the one, I probably might have to bring it, yeah. Transportation. The, the, the elephant in the room. So if you're interested in any of those topic areas, it's an area that's time to get involved and you know, we have a set up so that we evaluate existing conditions and then we bring in the LPBC to make recommendations on best practices, things to consider. And then that final working group meeting is to make recommendations to be included in the comprehensive plan. And those recommendations will go to the planning commission and then we will work with the planning commission to put everything together into the comprehensive plan. So please get involved, get your friends to get involved. It's really the time, I've said it before, to roll our sleeves and as a community to kind of push this thing forward and make some recommendations.
David, if I could. Quiet, sorry. If, if I can make one plea as well, I think the one place where we are unbalanced is the critical eighteen to thirty five denture.
Yes.
So if you know anybody who's younger and can spare us hour and a half, two hours.
So the three meetings are scheduled to be an hour and a half of working group meetings. And we have a workbook and kind of outline for each meeting, so hopefully we can, you know, get through that workbook and still have recommendations as we go. So hopefully we can keep it at that, so five hours of your time, six hours. And we're hoping to have everything recorded and online, so if you can't make a meeting, you can at least attend and make recommendations at that.
Thank you, David, I, I just want to emphasize, I think the comprehensive plan is the most, one of the most important documents that we have in this township, I think, other than, you know, financial, you know, where, where taxes go and that, I think the comprehensive plan is how, however we see our township grow or control growth as, as we go on. And if you haven't volunteered, I recommend that you do get involved, because it's most worthwhile time we're counting for the township that you spend. Okay, moving on, item eight is first, the floor.
Yes, just me again. Because I don't know how this all works, but back to the rich farm, when do we actually get to to voice our concerns? I know we're all talking about traffic and all that other crap, but the layout itself. I mean, when you look at the pictures, there's actually no overflow parking in that, in that development, nowhere. You don't see any pictures of that. When do we get to, to voice our opinions on all of that stuff? To the developer? When is the proper time? At these meetings, so I can bring that up next time, because there's none of that has, I don't see none of that on a picture anywhere. And I mean, I, I have friends who live up in New York, they live in one of those, these developments. But at the end of every street, there's a big section for people to park. You got Fourth of July coming up and you have something like this, where are these people gonna park? And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a mess. And when you look at the size of the driveways that they're, they're gonna put, when you look at the scale out there, everybody has pickup trucks, the garage is, a pickup truck will never fit in the garage anymore. Everybody has four cars. I mean, I just don't see the size of the streets, the size of the lots, the size of the vehicles, don't add up to the space in front of the homes. That's one of my complaints too. Plus, I know you people know how wide an ambulance is and all of that. Ambulance is on the street, UPS trucks on the street. It's just too tight. You know, I just, I just feel it's gonna be too tight. I mean, just go on Highland Street, and when you get towards Nineteenth Street, right where it funnels down, look what a mess you have right there. I mean, I, I just, we don't have to reinvent the wheel and do the same thing. This is another thought.
Okay, please come to, to the next one to.
Yeah, that's.
Please go on all of us.
Yeah, all of us will park at the meetings. I mean, I've seen these buildings up in New York and they, they account for all of that.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
I have a question, looks like there's some chat requests, are we going to read those as part of person's important other policy?
I, I don't either. They leave comments that they haven't asked to come. About your problem, there were some of that, and then just as the presentations were going on, it was just a comment.
No.
So no, they're courtesy of the floor, nobody put it in their name. Um, and that's something we should probably organize out for next time, so that at the beginning, we can um, let people know how we're gonna handle that. Again, second meeting that I've been involved with here, um, so we're fine tuning, and trying to make it better. I think we did a lot better with the sound. So, we're slowly getting there, thank you for everybody's patience.
I don't know if we want to incorporate this in, but I noticed, um, in legal, I'm not telling the meetings, I actually had, um, specifically written that you have a question or comment submitted and ready to the township by three P M of the meeting, something along that line, I don't know if we do that or if we. And I think that, I know that we're, a lot of it found in person meetings, but we're still complimenting with streaming. For those people who aren't comfortable coming to a live meeting, I think it's important to, have for them to have their concerns.
I don't know if we've been doing, public notice, I don't think we did, but.
Well, I think it's a, we just feature, okay. But the thing is, running down town, being specific about, edit to it by three P M on meeting day, we're a little more vague, to say, if you have comments or questions, please contact the membership. Um, and I like going with that, because if somebody wants to call and get me, then I can have a discussion. Um, if they have a question, they can give as being, and they bring it to the board. Um, and I, you know, i- if they want to come to the meeting, even in person, or perhaps get something in the chat, we are working toward that as well, so, so we want to keep all our options open, uh, with, without permitting anybody asking, oh, no, it's three thirty, I can't ask a question.
Well, this is something they should, should offer a hotline, or one of those, someone's, someone's to call, and say, answer the phone, say, who are who you are, and let them over the speakerphone, and ask a question.
Yeah, I think that is, the intent is that the, in addition to the people here, there, they can submit a question. As opposed to, I don't know, I mean, it's a hard cutoff, if this, and that wasn't submitted, or if I could hear you, you don't have a choice.
Yeah. Then we should get a big phone, big flashing light on it.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes. Okay, next month. Uh, next month, we have three on the agenda, Cedar Brook is back with their fifty million dollar building. Um, also, an old but a goodie, Rube, finer subdivision is returning, hopefully for one of the last times. And we do have a new one, Craxer Elementary School, they were expanding that, they're doing some additions, so this will be our first look at that, so those are the three. What was that?
No, I think it was Ridge Farm, we got twelve or sixteen new questions.
That's not fair to us.
Isn't that right? Are you, are you thinking I'm pulling to, for admission?
Oh, I'm sure I'm not.
Yeah, so I thought, so those are the three that are coming in next month.
Is there a meeting next week, for any of the zoning or general? What is, I'm sorry, what is?
Twenty eight.
Yeah, it's not next week.
Twenty eight.
It's the twenty eight, that's Monday, a week from Monday, so it's.
Is that for Virginia Farm?
No.
Oh.
Artview Hotel.
Oh, yeah, oh, oh, okay.
But it's not the high school, it's not here.
That's, that's mission.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
So that's on the twenty eight, and then the working group kick off this following day.
And the streethouse, or the apartment, the whole apartment, I used to own three oh nine.
The Artview is up at the high school at the other corner.
On three oh nine.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The new one. No more, do you want to talk about that, or? What are the others?
Anyone?
Uh, I think, of course, about a month ago, yeah, those came out. Um, I signed up for them, uh, more higher sign up for the end, and uh, Phil McNear signed up. I did send out to all planning commission members to see if they were interested, uh, Bill did take us up on that, so he attended as well, both of them. Uh, they were both informative, basically, they were compensations of the forty hour class down to about an hour and a half. Uh, but, they, all the good stuff, so, um, those were the handouts. Yeah, so it was good, um, and I encourage every one of you to go to these sort of classes, because you, you learn, I did that stuff, and I've been doing this a long time.
We will read first, and. So, the planning commission, whatever wants to go, we will comfortably offer this class.
It is usual. It's very usual.
I did write it.
Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.